Tuesday, North Miami Planning Commission, Tuesday, July the seventh, twenty fifteen. Meeting in council chambers at seven P M. Please stand the public. Publicly and like. Thank you very much. Please be seated. We'll call the board members, please.
Chair Kevin Seifert.
Present.
Present.
Charles Ernst.
Present.
Kenny Eich.
Present.
Jason James.
Here.
Emmanuel Janty.
Present.
Peggy Boulet. Baafishan.
Present.
Did we, anybody get a call, Peggy? Just no answer or anything? Alright, alright, well. First, will you look at the amendments that we bring tonight, or we go straight?
There are no amendments after this evening, Mr. Chair.
Alright, thank you very much. Uh, approval of minutes, June tenth? Alright, uh, can he remand it?
Can I?
Kenny. Kenny moved to approve the minutes, we have a second.
Second.
All in favor?
In favor.
Aye.
Alright.
Alright.
Minutes are approved, does the secretary have a, uh, copy for signature? Thank you very much. Well, I probably may be able to sign those, Charlie, he set that up for you. Oh, that was, that was when it were, oh, I just, I just, I just, just. Temporary.
Temporary disabled.
Oh, had to go through this here.
Question to council. Seeing as, well, there's a situation with the vice chair at the time, and I missed the one meeting.
Yeah, that was the time we had a vice chair.
Who did it. Heper, he replaced me. And now that I'm back on, we still don't have a vice chair, is that correct?
Yes, if you would like to entertain the motion for a vice chair this evening, you may.
I'd make the motion. But Charles Ernst beat the vice chair.
Alright, you're nominating Ms. Ernst, do we have a second to that?
Second.
Second, and all in favor? Alright, Charlie, your vice chair.
Thank you.
Congratulations, welcome to the floor. Alright, the morning of the public hearings, first item up is EC twelve dash fifteen. A resolution of the mayor and city council of the city of North Miami, Florida, adopting the five-year, twenty fifteen to twenty nineteen, consolidated plan and a fiscal year twenty fifteen, twenty sixteen action plan, under the community development block grant, C D B G, and home investment partnership grant, home programs, providing for attractive day and for all of the purposes, staff report, please.
Yes, uh, good evening, Mr. Chair and honorable member of the planning commission. Oh, this item is from the housing division of the community planning and development department. And it's regarding, you know, the year consolidated plan and as well as the one-year action plan, two thousand fifteen, two thousand sixteen, and then which is required by a, um, the urban, HUD, housing, urban and development, you know, federal, you know, agency for every entire community. And then, uh, we have here the consultant retained by the city who has prepared, you know, this document, and he's gonna provide some more insight and then try to gather some more input before we transmit that to the city council. Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
State your name, sir.
Christopher Plummer with Ask Development Solutions.
With which group, sir?
Ask Development Solutions.
Alright, sir.
Uh, Mr. Chair and members of the commission, we thank you for, um, giving us the opportunity to assist you in developing the consolidated plan and the one-year action plan. Uh, what I'm gonna do is just briefly go through a summary of the plan and the, the results of the consultation with the community and so on, and then open the floor for any questions from you, and I believe, um, any questions from, comments or questions from the public. As, as I mentioned the last time, the consolidated plan is a requirement of HUD. It's done every five years. The last one was done in twenty ten, or four period, twenty ten to twenty fourteen. And it's a tool to determine the housing and community development needs and priorities and strategies for the city, and how the funds received through the US Department of Housing and Urban Development will be allocated, namely, the community development block grant and the home investment partnership, uh, program funding. The HUD requires that you go through a comprehensive community input process, so it becomes a plan that is a unified vision for the community and to shape what the housing and community development programs will look like for the next, um, five years. Uh, the resources that accompany this plan for the five-year period is an estimate based on the upcoming years' allocation, and HUD has already informed the city that it will receive for fiscal year fifteen, sixteen, seven hundred and forty-six thousand nine oh nine for C D B G, and one ninety-seven hundred for the home program. So we did, we calculated that by five, multiplied that by five, so you have three points, seven million dollars of C D B G funds potentially that you will have over the next five years, and less than a million in home funds over the next five years that you would have to, you would have available. That amount may change when you actually have appropriations from, um, can, from Congress approved annually. We also included an amount of, um, forty-two thousand two hundred and twenty, which is program income money that has been repaid, federal funding that has been used and repaid to the city. We included an estimate of forty-two thousand for that. Um, in, in the, uh, process of developing this plan, we went through a very rigorous participation process. We had two public meetings, we had focus meetings with agencies, um, representing the business sector, social services, housing providers, and, and so on. We had about, we also had a presentation before the downtown, um. Action plan. Plan board, right. And so we had, the turnout wasn't that, um, significant in those meetings. We had roughly about fifteen persons across all the focus groups and public meetings. We had, however, we also put newspaper ads about the plan. Um, I think staff did an announcement on, on, on radio, I think Haitian, um, radio station. We distributed flyers door to door, letting people know about the plan, and also advertising an online survey that we had for both the public and for agencies. And from the online survey, we got about ninety-four responses from the public, and nine responses from agencies, and with that information, plus the historical allocation of funding, we came up with what, um, we consider would be the priorities for, um, the next five years. We also met with city staff from related departments that would be spending, um, C D B G funds such as the public works department, the code enforcement, um, um, public, uh, parks and recreation department. So, these are the general priorities for the plan, eliminate substandard housing, expanding economic opportunities, increasing public services, and improving physical infrastructure, both parks, parks, um, water sewer, roads and so on in some of the, um, low moderate income neighborhoods. So from the surveys and from the community input, these were the activities that we, that were identified as activities that the city should use, to use, use the funds for. Rehab, housing for first-time home buyers, rental assistance, economic development, um, slum and blight removal, um, public facilities, and then there's an amount of twenty percent from the C D B G allocation, and ten percent from the home allocation that's used for grants administration. Uh, these were the high priority activities that were identified, and I won't leave them out. I think new, new this year from the previous one was, uh, job creation and retention, assisting, um, micro enterprises, also, um, homelessness prevention, there was, um, several comments related to providing rental assistance to prevent persons from becoming homeless. Uh, these were the, uh, goals that we, the objectives that we identified, the number of units that would be assisted during that period, the number of families, the number of buildings that would be demolished, uh, the number of public service, public services that would be provided over the five-year period. And these were just expenditures from previous years, one point seven million was expended in twenty ten, twenty eleven. Um, and you see the decrease in funding as you go down each year. In fact, it actually, um, went up a bit, um, in fifteen, sixteen year, but this is what pattern has been. So even though we made the projections, as I mentioned, it may not really come out to be that ultimately. Uh, the annual plan, as I mentioned, the annual plan is when HUD actually says, this is the amount that you're going to receive. So for fifteen, sixteen, these were the objectives that were identified for the funds that the city has been notified that they will receive. And these are the allocation of funds for the different, um, programs. You'll see, again, the bulk of the funding that you have is being spent on housing rehab, owner-occupied housing rehab, um, then public services, public services which include services to youth, seniors, persons with disabilities, substance abuse, um, HIV AIDS, homeless, and so on. Those funds, the hundred and twenty-two thousand, are usually issued through a request for proposal, which I think happens in, in the fall. I think sometime in, in September, that, that happens. There's an amount for, um, elderly emergency repairs that was separated out from the regular housing rehab to provide emergency repairs for those persons who, um, are, um, sixty-five and over. Um, and there was fifty thousand provided for economic development, which the idea of, with those funds are to possibly, uh, develop a small business or a micro-business loan program to assist, um, I think we projected about, um, eight businesses or so with that funds. Those, that program is to be, be designed by, by staff. And then administration, the twenty percent set aside for administration. For the home program, which is mainly a housing program, the C D B G program involves housing and non-housing, uh, resources, but the home program is strictly a housing program. And, um, as you can see, again, most of your funding is, is being spent on single-family, uh, rehab, some funds being spent on first-time home buyer, home buyer programs. And then there's a fifteen percent set aside statutorily that has to be spent for housing that is developed by community-based nonprofit organizations called community housing development organizations, or CHODA for short. And that is the, uh, the allocation of funds for fifteen, sixteen. Any questions at this point, any feedback, any comments?
Go ahead, Mr. Chair.
Good evening.
Yes.
One of the things that caught my eye, um, during your, uh, period of public hearing, uh, you noted that the majority of those who answered your survey were in the three-three-one-six-one zip code, and that was almost a ninety-four percent participation from that. Can you explain what happened with, or have any idea as to why that skewed so high in that zip code and not three-three-one-six-one, which I think is even larger?
Um, I, I am not sure, I, okay, so the, the survey was advertised through the paper, it was advertised on the city's website. We also handed out hard copies of the survey. I know staff went to certain events and handed out, um, surveys. I think there's a program that they were, um, a public service or, or program that the persons who came in under that program, uh, received copies of the survey. I am, I don't know if those persons were, if that, that program was, um, focused on just that zip code. I, I, um.
Yeah, I'm, I'm just curious if not, I'm trying to, I'm trying to recall whether or not I received a, a, a survey at my house, at my residence, as a homeowner. I don't know how many.
No, we did, we didn't, we sent it out through emails, I hand them out, handed them out at event.
So.
Handed them out at events, um.
Did you do an email blast, I'm not sure.
And you guys said that, um, the three-three-one-six-one?
Yeah, yes.
Cause I, I didn't.
Um, Marie Franzine Ferentz, housing manager, city of North Miami. Um, probably the reason why he said that, because we have also a program going on with District Three, and we, when those people came to the office, we ended up the survey along, we had some public participation. We did not send out emails to individual homeowners, or ever. We did send out email blasts, we advertised it on the radio, the Miami Herald, and, um, it was on the website. We had multiple people from the homeless group and different, um, entities and, and community base that really participated. You probably received the three-three-one-six-one, probably they were the one who was highly concentrated and responded to this email, but we did send it out to any channel we know will be, will be able to reach to the public.
But like you said, uh, an individual homeowner in those zip codes might not necessarily be notified, is that correct?
We use a mutual channel for everyone. If the three-three-one-six-one zip code responded, we, we did not have any, um, we did not have any control over this, but we did reach out to all of them, we did to the east side, we did here, and we did on the west side, we, we give it out, we give it to the parks and recreation, we also did it to, we went to the parks and handed out to them. But it was up to them for them to give it back to us, to let us know what's going on.
Well, I'm ju, I'm just trying to do the, the numbers. Um, I for one, don't go to Sasso Park or to any of the parks that have time to do it or whatever. Um, working, working, uh, members of the community might not necessarily have time to reach out to participate in a lot of things, and it seems to me that the quickest way to get their attention is to address each one of the home, by, by emailing copies of, or notices to the, to the residents. I, I, I would think that that would kind of give you a little bit better idea of getting community input by addressing the residents, not so much as the organizations. I understand the importance of the organizations, uh, playing a part in this, and I, and I, you know, I applaud, uh, that method. However, I think along the line somewhere, um, residents kind of were overlooked in accounting for the numbers in those surveys, uh, with what you listed in, in the, in the report. Ninety-eight, ninety-eight people, I believe you said, responded to the survey. That's not a very large part of the population of, of the city, and a lot of those were probably people that would, you know, did have an interest, and I applaud them for filling that out, but I'm just not sure of the methodology, methodology involved in reaching out to the whole community that, that the survey instituted.
Um.
Uh, anyone else have a comment on that, or?
Yeah, that, my question was also about the process, because it, you're, I read the report, and one of the notations was prior to this meeting tonight, a total of seven assessment meetings were held between June tenth and June twelfth.
Yes, sir.
I don't know what kind of attendance we got, because as was just pointed out, there were ninety-eight people citywide responded to the survey. The, the focus group had thirteen citizens. So it, it looks to me as, looks like HUD wants citizen input, and clearly there's no representation of the city of North Miami involved in this from the citizens. Maybe from agencies who may or may not have some dog in the fight. But just getting, you got a hundred and ten people deciding how they think the money should be spent, and I'm not sure that the process is buttoned down.
Just to, I, I, tho, those comments are, are, are great, and, um, you know, we, we could probably next time try to, to increase the coverage maybe through emails or mail us the person's, um, houses with the links and so on. But I can tell you that the response you got here is very good compared to other communities.
Yeah.
Because people hardly come out.
Yeah.
You see it with public meetings, you may have one or two persons, unless it is, right, unless it is something, you know, where you're taking something away from people, they tend not to come out. So this response that you got comparatively speaking when we have done this, this is, this is an excellent response.
That's actually what my question was gonna be, in comparison, cause I know you're a consultant that does multiple areas around the country, and that was my first question, is, is that typical? Now, the second thing, it, it is us, well, it's on the residents to be more proactive and, and do what they have to do if they wanna be involved and, you know, reap some of the rewards of these benefits. But I think, um, to me, like the newspaper and things like that, that's just general info. I don't think, if you advertise it like that, that the residents really truly understand the importance and how much their voice matters. Now, I think, uh, mailing to people, like maybe including in what our utility bill, you know, a couple months ahead, or something like that, something that we, where we already spending, spending money doing as a city, maybe we could just shoot it in there, and just, uh, that way people have the link, they could choose to do the link, or they could just stuff it right back into their utility bill payment, and then when they drop it off, there you go. They, they, it makes it as simple as possible for them. So, I mean, I, I honestly, it's, I don't think it's anything on the approach that, you know, I guess your team took, but maybe we need to find out a more effective way to kind of put people in a position to, to make them benefit things for them, or, I don't, you know?
In addition.
Force it onto them.
In addition, we have a time constraint that whereas we had to cover, and then, um, we were trying to even go to reach out to the Facebook, the city Facebook is not even up, but maybe, yes, so we don't have that. So, um, the only thing that I know was missing from our approach was the mailing out with the water department, which we know we are, we also have limited budget, we will try to allocate that in the future. But we did everything possible, because usually we, they usually have two meetings, we conducted seven.
In two days?
In two days.
Yeah, that's not.
So, um, we sent out emails, we reached out to them, and in three days, seven, eight, nine, I mean, three days, seven, eight, nine, and ten. So it, 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 it is, it, it, it is saddened, because when you send it in there, having those public meetings, and you only have one or two citizens showing up, obviously you'd reach out them, you'd reach them somewhere, because they were not like, uh, the way that I, the route that we went to, you will say Haitian-American, because you had like three Americans sitting there. That's mean, we did something for them to reach out, but none of them really understood.
The importance.
The importance of it.
Correct, of how they're gonna benefit.
Yes.
So I think that, that's the, I think that's the challenge, you know, we need to, to kind of take head on and see how we adjust. Now, how long, I guess, how long ahead of time, like when, when were you brought on board as a consultant? Is it like two, three months ahead, or is it? Like when do we typically hire the consultant in order to help us with this?
Here is part of the challenge that you, that you're facing here. It, it has to go through a process where it has to come to you for your, your review and recommendation. It has to go to council for approval, and then it has to go to HUD. On August fifteenth, it has to, a button needs to be pushed with, with, and send it to HUD. You only had this meeting today. The council, the next council meeting in August is the twenty-eighth, which is after the August fifteenth date. So we had to kind of compress a, a, a lot to get this out the door. And even with that, as I'm, as I said, I think you did not gainsay the suggestions you're making, and I believe that those should be incorporated. You did get some good input and feedback even with the, the, the compressed schedule. I, I think, I think you did, um, as, as these things go, and as I said, we have done several of these, and this is a decent response.
Okay.
So this is on the council agenda for next Tuesday?
Yes.
Yes, we, uh, the supplemental has to occur by August fourteenth, so because of the city council recess, it has to go at, on July fourteenth.
July fourteenth.
A week from today.
Well, we, we're rather used to these, uh, rather regrettable statutory deadlines coming up on us with, with insufficient notice. This seems to happen periodically with many of the funding elements that we deal with in this city. By the time it gets to the planning commission for us to take a look at, the deadline is, is hanging over our heads. We, we seem not to be able to work ahead on any of these things, we are always behind, it seems. So, having said that, um, at this time, we'll go ahead and open the public hearing. Anyone who wishes to speak to this is invited to come forward. Public hearing is open. Third call for the public hearing. There's no thundering herd nor rising cloud of dust, therefore the public hearing is closed. It is now appropriate for commission discussion or a motion. Yep. Go ahead.
You have a home tenant-based rental assistance program, twenty-five hundred. Can you elaborate on that and the, also the home, uh, home first time, first time home buyer program, twenty thousand? What, what actually, we, I, I, there was so much to read there, um, just, can you tell me what the twenty-five hundred is for?
Uh, from time to time, uh, code enforcement will find out that a house or a unit is not up to code, and, uh, code enforcement will deem that the unit is inhabitable. And those people, usually if they have to go and rent someplace, they need to come up with three months, which they don't have. So our guideline allow them, allow us to give them fifteen hundred dollars for moving from one location to another, it was system for the first and last. So this is why we have allocated twenty-five hundred dollars.
You said with the, if you have, it was fifteen hundred dollars?
Up to fifteen hundred dollars, it doesn't have to be fifteen hundred dollars.
And, and the, um, the first time home buyer program, we just have twenty thousand set aside for that, how much are we?
Uh, for the past three years, uh, because of the housing market, uh, we aren't able to, well, not us, but overall, we cannot find, we have the need for housing, but however, we don't have the qualified applicants. So the money has been sitting there, not being used, instead of putting it into the first time home buyer, we allocated more where there is more needs for the rehabilitation, that's why we reduce it to twenty thousand dollars. But the city can give them up to ten or twenty thousand. But the city can give them up to ten or twenty thousand dollars for down payment assistance and closing cost.
So that's all we have is twenty grand, huh?
We just put twenty grands because we've been allocated forty and we're back to the part for the past two years because no one can be qualified for first mortgage.
So the money essentially was just sitting there even though they were approved?
The money, even though we've allocated, it was approved, it was sitting there and then where there is a need for rehabilitation, all money are occupied. So we reduced it this year. That doesn't mean if we're, if there is a need next year and we cannot just reprogram taking some money from that and put it, it put it in the first time home buyer. In addition to that, you will receive the ship allocation next, next month for the adoption, which we're also setting aside some money from first time home buyer as well.
I'm in agreement with that. I think if the money had, in the past, had been sitting there and we need to shift it somewhere, at least for the first year to see how it goes.
So we, we understand the absence of qualified home buyers. That has been a problem that has plagued our community for a number of years. All right, can we get a motion to move this item? Not yet, go ahead.
Wanted to point out on page one twenty-two of the comprehensive plan, uh, there were some, uh, strategies listed that, uh, would encourage development and I just was curious as to the thought behind, uh, some of the ideas, uh, that were presented. One in particular that drew my attention was permitting zero lot, uh, lot line homes and subrents in some residential districts, which enables the use of small lots for new development. Uh, developers of affordable housing are, are able to reduce costs by use, utilizing less land and can pass savings on to the end user. Um, I believe, I guess, most of the, uh, residential, residentially zoned areas, uh, all have, have setback requirements, correct? So this would, this would, this idea would entail changing zoning and?
No, this is really not a no- novel idea in, uh, land use regulations or land development regulations. And typically when you have, you know, non-conforming lots, you know, substandard lots, that do not meet, you know, or the dimensional requirements of your existing code. Let, let's say, you know, if your lot is a seventy-five minimum width and then you have like a fifty, maybe your lot that was, you know, planted, I mean, that was created way before your subdivision regulations, maybe like a forty foot wide, where you still can put all, and to maximize, you know, or the use of that land, you shift, uh, and you create a zero lot line, you shift the house, you know, have no setback on one side, so then they can have, you know, more open space on the other side. And, and then, you know, that's been done in many communities. I was learning code doesn't allow it, but this is something that can be done.
Right, but existing residential areas where there are standard setbacks, uh, in communities, um, what you're saying is those could withstand any kind of, um, a change since those are single family, let's say, single family dwellings, single family dwellings only.
I mean, typically, it, it would be like a townhouse development. You would not do it in a, or where already well-established neighborhoods.
Right.
But if like, you know, like a substantial, like, or, or maybe like five acres, you can do that to maximize the use of it and then, uh, create more affordable housing. Yeah, that, that is possible.
And would that, would that apply to, to lots that do meet the minimum width, lot width requirements of the city? Or can this be?
I mean, but, but, you know, typically when you have a zero lot line development, it's up for a development, it's for not a single lot. So you, you, just like a townhouse development, you don't see one town only in the middle of a single family.
Okay.
So what does that mean then when they go down further, it says now requiring infill housing to meet current zoning standards such as the minimum dwelling unit area and setback requirements? Is that, that basically saying the same thing with regards to zero lot line? It's just two bullet points now.
That, that would be a departure from the existing standards.
Right.
What we tried to outline there were just, and I think some of this came from the analysis of impediments, the fear housing choice, where the idea is trying to open up more housing opportunities for persons at all income levels. Those were some strategies that were suggested that have been used in other places. So if you have infill lots and that are maybe too small in terms of, of, um, the, the, the other, they're non-conforming, but if you reduce the setbacks, even on that individual level, you could be, you would be able to put maybe a smaller house on that in, in order to provide more housing opportunities.
Plots are designated in those residential areas, then the only way that they would have, they would have to come in and ask for a variance and a change of the plot.
And then that would, that would be justified also, I mean, to fulfill that policy.
But under that policy, could they, could they then petition for a zero lot line?
I mean, I mean, like I said before, the zero lot line, I would not, you know, encourage that for a single lot, but like, you know, for development, like anything over like two acres, for example, you want to create, you know, affordable housing.
Because I know in some situations where we have, we actually have a, a residential, um, uh, zoning along a busy stretch of highway, I believe where that's adjacent to a commercial. I think we have some of that situation. That's the only area that I would think that this would maybe apply to, other than your regular residential areas, but I just didn't know if that's defined enough with, with these, these recommended strategies.
And, and then even, uh, in our complaint that is being amended, I mean, one of the policies on there is to create, you know, accessory dwelling unit, which actually our LDR, you know, currently prohibit.
The what was once called mother-in-law quarters.
There was a policy in, in, but, you know, 'cause those are recommendations from the states and, I mean, I can, you know, attest to that here as an expert in housing. And then, you know, 'cause, you know, we have a crisis, you know, when you're spending more than thirty percent of your income, you know, in housing, this is not affordable. Affordable doesn't mean that, you know, it's for, you know, low income housing. It just, you know, you are to be able, if you allocate more than thirty percent of your income to, to afford your housing, 'cause that mean it's not affordable. And then so that's why, you know, you have, you know, from state policy and from HUD, you know, they trying to, and give cities money, municipalities money to be able to address that thing, 'cause there's a dire need for housing, you know? And then vo, create a wide range, you know, housing options, you know, in many communities, especially a community like ours.
Oh, I, I understand the need for creativity in doing this.
Yeah.
But I also would have some, um, concerns of the existing neighborhoods that are enjoying their, their setbacks and, and, uh, the way that, you know, they, they share that space with their neighbors. And, um, I'm not too sure that I would wanna.
Yeah, no, I mean, yeah, for, for.
Have it compromised in some way because there's a loophole in, in the way that we, we look at our zoning.
But that, this is just, you know, some, mm, strategy, some recommendations.
Right, I understand.
So there's, and even you go to the LDR.
There's a rabbit hole there that we need to, be careful we don't go down.
In the hierarchy of things, the comprehensive plan cannot be, cannot, this would not trump the comprehensive plan, nor can it trump the LDRs. So this is where it exists. If it could be done because it exists, then, then it's a strategy that, that the city should, can explore and locate to. But this by no means will trump those two other documents.
I understand. I just, you know, I wanted to point it out as the fact that it should, you know, we, we be faced with that rabbit hole somewhere down the line, where we have a clear understanding of, of what the strategy means.
I have one two-part question, if you don't mind. One of the challenges, as you stated, is the lack of funding for the overall plan. And since, and you mentioned that last year we're down two and eight point respectively on the two funds, but over five years we're down almost half. Fifty, forty-five percent reduction in the funding that was received five years ago and forty percent in the funding that was received two and a half years ago. So can, A, I guess my first question is, how would you comment on the, the dramatic cut in the funding? And the second part of that is in the face of that, over the next five years, we forecast no reduction.
Well, um, that's, that's a, that's a good question. It is really a, a congressional issue and every year, the different advocacy organizations push to try to make sure that the appropriation for housing and community development programs are not reduced, the housing trust fund is not reduced and used for other things. We, we had that battle here in Florida when the, the, the ship was set up for as a housing trust fund during the glory days and there was a lot of money in it, but it has been shifted to other uses. It, it is really a political, um, issue that possibly the city, if you have a lobbies, can, can push to, to try to join the national, um, um, push to, to keep the funding and or actually have it increased. Now, in terms of the consolidated plan, it's just, uh, an overall vision. Each year you have to develop an action plan based on the money you actually receive. So the numbers in the consolidated plan are not fixed in stone. Some of the stra, the strategies are in terms of if you see a need for housing rehab, if you get to year three and your, your, your response from your community shows that you do not need as much housing rehab, you could shift money into economic development or other areas. But it's a fluid plan that each year you actually are given the, an amount of money and you have to divvy up that amount of money. But, uh, you know, most of us just use the calculation five times. Maybe an approach might be to, to use the, the forty percent reduction, as you say, but we all try to be optimistic, I think.
All right, so effectively what we're dealing with here is a pass through on federal funding. Okay, that's the point we need to make clear for everybody's benefit that this is a pass through on federal funding and when Uncle Sam is generous, we get goodly amounts of money and when Uncle Sam is not, we don't. Okay.
So we have no control over that?
That's true. There is not a thing we can do to change that.
It is what it is.
But it is what it is and every city in, in the state of Florida is having the same problem. In fact, every city across the country.
It's having the same problem.
And then I like, I, I applaud you with what you did, pretty much I, I agree with the seniors, the, the amount for, for taking into consideration seniors and the youth programs and, and the housing, uh, and with what you had to work with, uh, overall, I think it was a fairly equitable distribution of, of how you felt that that funding should be distributed and, um, I have no problem with that whatsoever. It's just unfortunate that you had very small numbers to deal with. But I think we did end up with pretty much a consensus as to what, what needs, uh, or needs to be addressed and also, um, you know, the, the paltry amount that we have to, to deal with and, and, and the, the amount of, of housing rehabilitation that we will be facing down the road with the aging housing market in the city. So with that, I, you know, I do commend you for at least coming up with some, some working, um, uh, numbers to, to, you know, allocate, allocate those funds.
Same with the.
All right, uh, if we have, uh, if we have an understanding of where we're going on this, uh, then Cheryl call for a motion.
Make a motion to.
All right, can each moves to approve? Do we have a second?
I second.
Seconded by Manuel?
Yes.
Thank you very much. All in favor? All right, that plan is approved unanimously. Thank you very much, sir, for your time and efforts. All right. EC thirteen dash fifteen. A resolution of the mayor and city council of the city of North Miami, Florida approving a waiver of plat for the Westport Properties Incorporated site located at one-two-two-zero-zero Northeast Fourteenth Avenue with Miami-Dade County Folio number zero-six-two-two-two-nine-zero-zero-zero-zero-one-seven-one. In accordance with Article Three, Division Eight, Section Three dash eight-zero-two of the City of North Miami Code of Ordinances, Land Development Regulations and Chapter Twenty-eight, Section Twenty-eight dash seven-B of the Miami-Dade County Code of Ordinances, providing for an effective date and for all other purposes, staff report, please.
A staff recommendation is that the planning commission, you know, recommends approval of the proposed resolution, approving with condition on the waiver of plat entitled waiver of plat survey, boundary survey for Westport properties, eh, for, yeah, for the property located at one-two-two-zero-zero North East Fourteenth Avenue to allow the subdivision of this three-point-nine property into two separate parcels and forward the result to the city council. The applicant, uh, which is present here, uh, the owner contract to purchase in that property, it's a three-point-nine acre, eh, property and the intent to subdivide it into two parcels, a basic approximately one-point-eight and two-point-one acres each. And then we have, um, eh, we view that to, eh, for compliance with our land development regulation and also to make sure that it's consistent with the policy, eh, policy, goals, objectives and policies of the complaint. And then we also requested, you know, input, you know, co, eh, review comments from, uh, our other city departments, public works, you know, had no issue 'cause with, um, the property, I mean, being subdivided. And we also, eh, eh, sent on the waiver of plat to, um, the city, eh, surveying company. And then they had issued some comments, but eh, eh, at the time of the writing of this report, you know, we have not received, eh, eh, since then, the applicant has, um, eh, replied to those comments and those, eh, those responses were forwarded to the city engine and we haven't received, you know, the input, that was as of yesterday. But, um, eh, they were not, you know, major outstanding comments and then, uh, so his staff recommendation is that, you know, this item is transmitted to the city council for, for approval, you know, eh, with the condition that, you know, those, all those comments which are now addressed, you know, be addressed eh, before, uh, the city council meeting. So, and the applicant is here and also to answer all of your questions. Thank you.
All right, thank you. Can the applicant please state your name and address and otherwise identify yourself?
Hi, how are you? My name is Mitch Feldman. Uh, thank you, chairman, newly elected vice chair and esteemed board members. Uh, I represent, uh, Westport Property, uh, the property located at one-two-two-zero-zero Northeast Fourteenth Avenue. We have with us today as well, um, Abraham Hidone, who's a surveyor who, uh, delivered that waiver of plat for you, and James Preacher, our project manager, so we can answer any questions you might have.
What is the current use of that site?
It's an industrial use. I can let, um, Abraham kinda fill out specific technical questions, I can have, uh.
Yes, what is currently happening on that site?
It's, there's a, um, of, it's vacant lands on the piece that we're purchasing and the other piece is basically, um, it's a warehouse. I think they have sound equipment, uh, industrial, um, business there.
So it's, it's a, eh, eh, it's largely a warehouse operation, there's not actually any manufacturing going on, it's, it's storage of, of one sort of.
Yeah, it's a warehouse and I think in the front they may have, um, just like offices that they operate on.
All right.
Not offices, I mean, they're, I, I don't wanna say offices, it's their, it's a warehouse and they have, um, I guess, uh, eh, yeah, a small little air conditioner in the front.
Mr. Attorney, you have something?
I must ask a question, if I may, Mr. Chair.
Yes, you may.
For clarity. And for the record, um, you represent Westport.
Right.
Okay, but the owner is MKR.
Correct.
Okay, so, eh, who, I know you have a power attorney from the, from MKR. You're the surveyor, Mr. Abad. Okay. How certain is, will this conveyance be transferred from MKR to Westport? How certain is that? Because who's the applicant here? Is it MKR or Westport?
It was a joint application that required, the application required both the seller and the buyer to apply for this waiver of plat.
Okay, I will have to amend the resolution accordingly because, uh, the res- resolution only mentions one entity. At the time that it was prepared and drafted, I was under the impression that they were the owner and, uh, lo and behold.
It had read that way, didn't it?
Yes, sir. And so lo and behold, it wasn't until about an hour ago that I finally ended up receiving the power of attorneys from the, uh, from the attorney's, um, office. So I need to, for the record, I will amend the resolution before it goes to city council to, see, my issue is this, you can't be the sole applicant 'cause you don't own the property. So, right?
We're not.
Okay, so, that's what I wanted to point out. So I will properly amend the, the resolution to indicate the roles of each parties and and this is subject to, uh, conveyance from N K, M K R to Westport. Thank you.
Which, at yet, at this point hasn't yet happened. Alright.
That is correct, uh, but that'll be, uh, it'll be up to me to draft it accordingly to rectify and identify each of the entities' proper responsibilities, uh, here. And, you know, role, because one is the property owner and the other one is the buyer who is now applying for the subdivision.
Alright.
It'll be, it'll be clarified.
Well, uh, the, uh, okay.
Alright. We've heard that. We've had recommendations. Staff will open the public hearing. Anyone wishing to speak to this item is invited to step forward. Public hearing is opened. Second call for the public hearing. Third call for the public hearing. I hear no thundering heard. I see no rising cloud of dust and therefore this public hearing is closed. Commission questions?
Yes.
Alright, go ahead, Mr. James.
Um, this question's for the surveyor.
Surveyor, please state your name for the record.
Abraham Hadad, we had only.
One of the comments that, uh, the city engineers mentioned was the, um, that you didn't have any underground utility shown on the, the survey itself.
We, we addressed that comment. We do have.
That's on this, this, on this other one we?
We send, we send revised copies.
Yeah?
Yeah. We address the comments.
I don't think we got, did we get?
It was already on the desk here.
I have, uh.
It is on, it's on.
Oh, okay, okay.
It's, it was on the desktop tonight. It'll be there in your papers.
Yeah, yeah.
Really?
Uh, the surveyor has provided, you know, a large, you know, survey.
Yeah.
Oh, okay.
What'd you find underground? I don't see anything.
Yeah, there, there, there's so, there's a water line, I think, running in front of the property.
North, north, south, east or west?
Right, right in front of the property.
Right in front. Okay, so it's outside of the boundary?
Let our engineer take a look at this.
Nothing inside.
Nothing inside, okay. That was my main, that, that's, to me, that was, that was a very important comment cause I was curious as to how you were gonna divide up, uh, you know, store water and all that stuff. But if there's none within the property?
No.
So, how they're getting water and sewer to the building?
They're gonna connect, uh, that's gonna be the engineer's work, but there, they, there is availability. Uh, our, the, the engineer and the team already, uh, uh, went through all the channels and there's point of connections and there's availability for the utilities. So, that's, that's not gonna be a problem.
So, you wouldn't, yeah, you wouldn't have to cross to somebody else's property?
Uh, I'm not a hundred percent sure about that, but I don't think so. I think it's in front of the property.
I'm just asking, so you guys keep it in mind.
No, uh, to answer your question, cause this was sent to the public works, you know, and then the city engineer said, now they have no comments cause everything is fine, yeah.
Well, they did have.
No, that's the surveyor.
Right.
Not the city engineer.
Right.
Oh, I see, sir. You got me. You're right.
Out of curiosity to the proposer, please, what is the intention of this subdivision?
On the piece that we're purchasing, we're planning to build the self-storage facility.
Gonna build a what?
Self-storage, uh, mini-storage facility.
Oh, mini-storage, oh.
Self-Storage.
So, you're not actually buying the entire parcel?
No.
You're buying a?
We're buying the piece that we're separating here.
Just the piece of it, okay.
The vacant, the piece of vacant land.
Just wanted to clarify that. There's always a need for storage facilities.
I think so.
Yes, with, with the.
I hope so.
With the birth of Walmart, we, we've come to accumulate lots of stuff. And what we call for a modern civilization requires us to put this stuff someplace. Once we have filled the garage and the utility storage building and the crawl spaces above and below our homes, we find that's still not enough room for our stuff. And so, now we build storage facilities for our stuff.
It's a worldwide phenomenon.
Yes, it seems to be, and particularly noticeable here. Alright, uh, do we have questions? Yes, Mr. Ernst, do you?
Yes. Um, alright, so just to get some, um, perspective on this. Uh, you're purchasing or your intent is to purchase parcel A only, correct? So, is that?
If, if parcel A is the piece without the building.
Without the building.
Yes, parcel A.
Okay, parcel A. So, the other group that, they're, they're going to maintain control of parcel B.
Yes.
Correct, once it's divvied up?
Correct.
So, according to council, um, everything is fine with the fact that he has power of attorney to?
Yes, I'm satisfied, uh, the, the power of attorney, uh, was granted to the surveyor. Um, and, uh, in lieu of the owner, M K R, being present, he allowed this to occur this evening. And that's okay. It's just that, to show that they have standing to even speak on the matter, we need a power of attorney which we received. And then the resolution will reflect the proper roles of each, you know, both of these entities.
Sure. Okay, so, uh, again, uh, terms would, would, any future terms of the agreement in the purchase? Well, doesn't matter with what we declare.
Yeah, all we're looking at is sub, uh, subdividing one lot into two parcels.
Okay.
Um, who keeps what, when, you know, that's up to.
Yeah.
Yeah, yeah, that's not what we're looking at here. At this moment.
How many storage units are you guys looking at?
Um, we're still going through that.
Okay.
Iteration, but, I mean, we're, well, we will build, we're not looking for, ultimately, we're not looking for variances or anything. We're gonna build within what's entitled for that site.
Okay, within our regulation.
So, we, we just don't know the exact size of the units at this point. We're still going through that with our content.
No, he said he's not.
The maximum height is fifty-five.
Yeah, the maximum height is fifty-five, which I think will cap us at, I mean, we might be four stories, possibly five, but probably four.
Okay.
We, we didn't see a, like, a concept plan.
Yeah, that's why, yeah, cause they, yeah, they were in a concept plan.
But, but they're, they're.
We're not at that stage yet.
Yeah, right, and, and they have to ma- keep within the development standards of the M one, so.
Well, given that they're just, go ahead, Kenny.
You have a, an apartment complex over on the other side of the tracks over there.
Um, yeah.
On the east side.
And, uh, you know, I, I don't have a problem with self-storage. I have one on Arch Creek Road, which is very tasteful.
Right.
Done ice, proper landscaping, trees, I mean, it's, it's, uh.
Kenny, are you talking into the mic?
Okay, can you hear me? I'm sure. Proper landscaping, is that your intent to landscape and beautify the area?
Absolutely, this is a class A, first-class facility.
Okay, I mean, uh, there's, there's one on Biscayne Boulevard, I see, on, uh.
Public storage?
Public storage.
On one, uh, maybe one fourteenth, one seventeenth?
Yeah, that's the public storage and I think there's like a, a, a used storage or something like that, or.
Yeah, well, well, I guess what I'm getting at is, yeah, I'd like to see, I hope when you put this project up and we're talking about our land use in the last couple of months, it's something like we have on Arch Creek Road where it's a thing of beauty to look at, not some sterile storage area that you're gonna put your stuff in and the hell with everybody else. You gotta actually beautify it and, and have proper landscaping and make it something enjoyable.
Yeah, that, that's our intent. And I mean, self-storage has evolved over the years where you used to see a lot of the just garage doors and block. Now, they're, they're a little more climate-controlled, air-conditioned, monitored units. Every door has an alarm. I mean, really, they're, they're more first-class now. The industry has evolved and that's, um, the Westport Companies has over eighty storage facilities throughout the country. So, it's a real, um, significant entity that's coming here to build.
Okay.
Well, if I may, given that you're just west of the railroad tracks and all aboard Florida is determined to run thirty-two trains a day up and down those tracks, plus all the trains the Tri-Rail is proposing to run, I, I, I wouldn't necessarily recommend the place for storing fine water for crystal. But, having said that, you know, um, I, I would wish you well in this proposed development and hope it, it is successful. Uh, if there's no further questions, Cheryl call for a motion. Charles Ernst, most approved. We have a second?
I second.
Seconded by Bob. Bob, alright, seconded by Bob. All in favor?
Aye.
Alright, that's done. Thank you, gentlemen. Good luck to you.
Good luck.
Welcome.
Nothing like having more places to put our stuff.
Oh, yeah.
Alright, P C fourteen dash fifteen. An ordinance of the mayor and city council of the city of North Miami, Florida, amending chapter twenty-nine of the North Miami Code of Ordinances entitled Land Development Regulations, by amending Article Three, Division Six, entitled Variances Heard by Board of Adjustment, specifically at section three dash six zero four, entitled Administrative Variances, and amending Division Seven, entitled Appeals, specifically at section three dash seven zero two, entitled Administrative Appeals, to extend the time required for an aggrieved party to file a notice of appeal to the Board of Adjustment from the current ten days, thirty days, and to shift the cost of such an appeal to the owner of the property seeking the benefits derived by the issuance of an administrative variance, providing for repeal, providing for conflicts, providing for severability, providing for codification, and for an effective date. Staff report, please.
Uh, this, um, item was sponsored by, you know, his, Councilman Galvin. And, uh, as a result of, you know, uh, uh, certain residents, you know, reaching out to him, you know, uh, mentioning, complaining about, you know, the criteria, I'm sorry, for the granting of administrative variance, uh, as they relate to, oh, no, uh, notices, you know, appeals. I'm sorry. I'm sorry. Yeah, uh, they have reached out to him, you know, uh, about, you know, the criteria for administrative variances, you know, and also about, you know, the administrative appeal process, you know, in case. And then so, this amendment seek to extend that time cause usually, uh, when somebody applied for an administrative variance, letters are sent to the neighbors, to the adjacent neighbors, you know, not, not to five hundred feet radius. And, and then, you know, within, after ten days, then, you know, the approval will be issued to the applicant. Or, I mean, so if the applicant, if, let's say we deny, the applicant can appeal to the Board of Adjustment and they would have to pay a hundred dollars. The cost of the application itself right now, two, two sixty-two, so, uh, twenty. But if our neighbor has to, uh, wants to appeal the decision, let's say it's, it's applied, they have, also have to pay a fee of two hundred, um, and sixty-two, two dollars. So, so, some of the residents, you feel like, no, they, they shouldn't have to pay for that. And then they should also be allowed, uh, more time, you know, because they only have like basically ten days to really appeal the decision. So, they feel like they should be granted even more time to appeal that decision. So, this, uh, amendment trend, uh, seek to extend that appeal period from ten days to thirty days. And also to shift, uh, the cost, the burden of the cost of the appeal solely to the applicant, even if the applicant i- is, is not, uh, appealing it. So, and then, uh, that's, it's essentially, that's what this text amendment seek to achieve. And, uh, it, it, so, our recommendation, you know, is, uh, uh, to approve the proposed ordinance and transmit it to the city council. And, I mean, we, we do know that, you know, from an administrative standpoint, you know, it would be hard, you know, to shift that, once the applicant has applied, if he knows somebody's appealing it, you know, I don't know, uh, nobody would come back and say, you know, are we gonna pay that for somebody to appeal? Or they'd make him just walk away from it, so, that's our issue.
Alright, thank you. Uh, since there is no developer proposing this and, uh, we, uh, we can go directly to open the public hearing. Anybody wishing to speak to this is welcome to come forward. Public hearing is opened. Our crowd is greatly diminished. Young lady, we're honored by your presence this evening. And you, sir? Gee, if we had a band, we could have a little dance here. Well, but given that and recognizing we have no one wishing to speak to this, the public hearing is closed. We're now open for commission discussion.
May, may I ask, I'm, I'm a little... We have an administr- we have an administrative variance that's granted, um, on parcel A, but the neighbor on parcel B doesn't like that idea. So, now, he, that person has thirty days to file an appeal. Am I, am I?
Correction, Commissioner. The way it's, the way it's written currently, you have really less than ten days. The, the code gives you ten days to file an appeal.
The, okay, ten days.
But here's what happens. The city renders the community development, uh, the department renders the decision. Let's say in favor of the administrative variance, which by the way, these are the variances that do not go before the Board of Adjustment.
Right.
These are minor, very narrow type, very small stuff, generally. So, the department renders its decision on the first day of the month, as an example. The person need, that needs to appeal or wants to appeal has ten days from the rendering of that decision on the first day. However, no one knows about it until the department mails that determination to adjacent property owners. So, let's say it takes three, four days for you to receive. You're the neighbor. You don't like what, what, you know, you're against the administrative variance. Three days go by. How many days do you have now? Seven. You don't have ten, you have seven. Not only that, but you have to pay for the appeal. It's not the person, the property owner who's benefiting and requesting the variance, it's you. So, if you don't have the money, you don't get, you don't have a right to appeal.
So, let me just get that point right there now. I've already paid for my administrative variance. My neighbor next door, for whatever reason, doesn't want me to have that variance. So, now, he appeals it under this new proposed ordinance. He has to pay or she has to pay.
No, 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 you have to pay.
You would have to pay as the property owner seeking the variance.
Okay.
Again.
Why?
That raises the question out now. Alright, Kenny applies for the variance. Hypothetical, okay? We'll, we'll set up the monopoly board here. So, Kenny applies for the variance and pays the fee.
Pays the fee, yes.
And he's granted the variance.
Yes.
So, he paid his fee, he got his variance. Now, Emmanuel lives next door and he says, well, I don't think Kenny should get that variance. I wanna file an appeal. Who pays the fee?
Kenny. It, under this rewrite, it would be Mr. Each, Commissioner Each.
So, he already paid and he won and he has to pay again?
Well, he hasn't won anything yet. He has only obtained a variance from the department, which is subject to appeal. So, the options are this. The property owner seeking the variance pays or the appealing individual pays for the appeal or nobody pays and the city pays for it. I mean, the, the, these are the, these would be the options.
The appealing individual should pay for the appeal.
Yeah, the person who's contesting it is the one that needs to pay. Now, if Kenny lost his application for variance, then he would be right to file a notice of appeal and then he should pay that appellate record.
Which is why now the, the, the code allows him, allows that. If, let's say, Mr. Each applied and then was denied and then he pays no.
And he should have thirty days to do that. I don't have a problem with that.
I agree with you. We don't have a problem with thirty days.
They tell you, it's the fee.
It, it's the, the, the problem, it comes in.
If we don't have the power to amend this and send it to city council, or do we? Can we?
See, the.
You can, you can, no, you, you, you can agree.
The problem, I think, is determining who's the aggrieved party.
Why shouldn't the person who benefits from the variance take the bill?
Well, because, let's say I don't like it as my neighbor. He's already paid the fee to get the application and got it granted.
Uh, I mean, I, I don't think.
So, he got what he wanted and now the next-door neighbor decides, I don't think you should have that. Well, the next-door neighbor paid the fee.
And then also to add to that, to what another dimension, that applicant did not win the, that decision. The city won the, won the decision.
This, so I have a question about the appeal process itself. So, then, if, uh, Emmanuel's appealing Kenny, right? Uh, he, he goes to the city and then what do you do? Knock on Kenny's door and say, hey, we need, you, we need two hundred and sixty-two dollars to take away this variance from you?
Uh, that, that, I like that part, I mean.
No, 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 no.
And then he gives up his right to the variance? The city pays or he gives up his right? The city pays or he gives up his right to the variance?
He just, you know, can walk away from the applicant.
But, but Kenny's already been granted the variance now.
And that gets screwed again by Fannie, you know, two hundred and fifty-some bucks.
Well, the grant, the variance isn't official until the thirty days, right?
Right, right. In fact, the, the ordinance actually, um, provides some level of protection to the property owner re, requesting the, the variance, administrative variance, and, and here's why, um, up until now it was silent as to when the property owner w, was to act upon that administrative variance. Conceivably, what could have, what could happen right now is...
You're going to...
The, the department accepts, gives me the administrative variance, I begin the work and then somebody files an appeal. What happens to the work if I lose that, eh, that appeal? You see that? So right now, the administrative variance gives you a cooling off period up until the expiration of the appeal, which, which really i, is needed because it's to protect all the parties. Somebody, eh, it protects both parties. The person contesting the, 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 the variance and it also protects the property owner who may inadvertently act upon the administrative variance, begin construction, whatever the case may be, and boom, gets slapped in the...
I don't have a problem with that part, but I, I have a problem with the neighbor appealing. If he wants to appeal that decision, then he should pay it.
Yeah, that, that should be an appellate fee.
So your, your issue is the shifting of the cost to the property owner seeking...
To the appellate.
Yeah.
Yeah, it's the person who files the appeal that's got to bear the cost.
Okay, so whether that would be the, the property, uh, an adjacent property owner or the property owner seeking to appeal because the property owner also can appeal.
Your property could lose his request, in which case...
The person filing the appeal should do the paying.
Yeah, the person who files the appeal is the one who's got to pay.
My, my only concern is what if I'm, 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 now I'm Emmanuel, right?
Right.
And I didn't like what Kenny did and I had no say because it wasn't open to public comment and the staff made a decision without taking my, you know, my thoughts about it into consideration. Like, I feel as though I wasn't even considered in the process of decision-making and that he got away with something that, you know, he paid extra for.
No, no, but, but again, those are administrative variances that the code allows staff to grant.
Correct.
So whether or not...
Because, because, you know, sometimes it, it's a variance.
You will know about it, you will know about it once it's approved by the department, of course. It's already eating away at your ten-day schedule to file an appeal, so that's what we're looking for.
Don't we put a, don't we, let me ask you two questions here, if I may. Don't we notify the surrounding neighborhood? Uh, we, we notify, we notify the neighbors of an administrative variance?
Well, you also notify them when you apply for it, don't you?
No, no, but, but eh, let, let, let me shine, shed some more light, you know. In the old code, there was a, a provision that allows, before that decision was rendered really, to, to notify the neighbor.
Okay.
But the process from the person that was sitting before me in that position and she was following that process even under this, the current code.
Oh, okay.
So what, what she would do, she would receive an application for variance, she sent out the notices to the neighbors first before eh, final that eh, decision. So once after the ten-day passed, you know, we will see, they received no objection, then